Folks in the aisles and in the back, plenty of seats. Please find your way to your seats and we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you. We are less than thirty seconds away. Please find your seats. Let's begin. Good morning. We can do better than that. Good morning. All right. I'm your Master of Ceremonies, Juan Mendieta, from the Department of Transportation and Public Works, and it's truly an honor to be with you here today for such a momentous and historic occasion during the holiday season and with some great weather. It doesn't get any better than that. Madam Mayor, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, colleagues, friends, and fellow residents, thank you for joining us this morning for the 2022 Installation Ceremony as we convene to administer the Oath of Office to our elected and appointed County Commissioners. I am now pleased to present the Miami-Dade County Mayor and members of the Board of County Commissioners. Let's begin with the Mayor of Miami-Dade County, the Honorable Daniela Levine-Cava. Mayor Cava? Representing District One, the Honorable Oliver G. Gilbert III, who was the newly-elected Chairman of this Board. And the newly-elected Commissioner representing District Ten, the Honorable Anthony Rodriguez, who's the newly-elected Commission Vice Chairman. The newly-elected Commissioner representing District Two, the Honorable Marlan Bastien. The Honorable Keon Hardiman, representing District Three. The newly-elected Commissioner representing District Four, the Honorable Mickey Steinberg. The Honorable Eileen Higgins, representing District Five. The newly-elected Commissioner representing District Six, the Honorable Kevin Marino Cabrera. The Honorable Raquel A. Regalado, representing District Seven. The newly-elected Commissioner representing District Eight, the Honorable Danielle Cohen-Higgins. The Honorable Kione L. McGee, representing District Nine. The newly-appointed Commissioner representing District Eleven, the Honorable Roberto J. Gonzalez. The newly-elected Commissioner representing District Twelve, the Honorable Juan Carlos Bermudez. And last but certainly not least, the Honorable Renee Garcia, representing District Thirteen. Thank you, Senator. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome your Board of County Commissioners with a warm round of applause. At this time, I'd like to recognize some other elected and appointed officials who joined us here today. The Commissioner for the Village of Viscan Park, Veronica L. Oliveira. We can applaud. The Manager of North Bay Village, Ralph Rosado. Commissioner for North Bay Village, Richard Chervoni. Commissioner for North Miami Beach, Daniela Jean. The Mayor of West Miami, Eric Diaz-Pedron. Town Manager for Cutler Bay, Mr. Ralph Casals. Councilman for Cutler Bay, Richard Ramirez. Our former Chairman, Jose Pepe Diaz. Former Chairman and Commissioner Rebecca Sosa. Former Commissioner Sally Hayman. We also have here a Commission President for the City of Sweetwater, Mr. Saul Diaz. Former State Senator, Anitere Flores. Commissioner for the City of Sweetwater, Reynaldo Ray. School Board Member, Maritere Rojas. As School Board Member, Dorothy Bendros Mindingal. Let's give all our elected officials another round of applause. And now, ladies and gentlemen, please rise to the Presentation of Colors and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, National Anthem, and the invocation. Presenting our colors today is a Joint Honor Guard to include Miami-Dade Police Department, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, and Miami-Dade Corrections and Rehabilitation Department. Honor Guard, please present the colors. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please welcome Adrienne Tony and Angelise, the children of Vice Chairman Rodriguez; Chloe and JD, the children of Commissioner Steinberg; Ari and Sloan, the children of Commissioner Cohen-Higgins; and Sky and Ava, the children of Commissioner Gonzalez, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Great job, kids. Our future looks bright with leaders like this. Thank you so much. And now the very talented Miami-Dade Police Department Sergeant, Brigitte Sanchez, will sing our National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets regale, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of free and the home of the brave?
So much Sergeant Sanchez. And leading us in the invocation this morning are Deacon John Armour, Rabbi Yossi Harlig, and Imam Dr. Abdul Samra. Please come forward.
Good morning, all. This morning, we want to pray for all of our elected officials throughout the United States and especially for those being inducted here this morning. We want to ask God that He guide them, that He be with them, and that He give them wisdom to make decisions for our community that are filled with wisdom, justice, and most importantly, as we're called to do, that they defend the poor of our community, the downtrodden, those who are less fortunate, that their decisions protect those who need them the most, and that they guide our county forward to be successful today and always as they implement their plans for us and for all those who live in our county. This feels like the beginning of a joke. A rabbi, an imam, and a priest come on stage. This is not a joke. This is a time of prayer. And someone told me before, you know, Rabbi, I'm so glad all the religions are here because, boy, do we need to pray a lot today. But the truth is, they really represent our community. They're all the children of God, and we all want the same things. And we all want to bring the unity together in our community. We pray today, Avino Makenu, our Father in Heaven. We pray that You bless our newly-elected Miami-Dade Commissioners with much success in their newly-elected position and for their work ahead with they represent all the citizens of Miami-Dade County. Our sages have taught us, "The world's foundation is on three things: justice, truth, and peace." Master of the universe, we pray that You endow them with the wisdom to lead on a path, as Commissioners, a path of justice, a path of peace, and a path of truth, representing our whole community. May You bless them to make the difficult decisions with integrity, to be the government for all people. Next week, we will celebrate the Festival of Hanukkah, the Festival of Lights, which commemorates a battle of tyranny versus freedom, right versus might, and victory of the few over the many. While this story happened 2,000 years ago, its message reverberates till today, that is, even in difficult times, one can turn challenges into opportunity, a stepping stone of greater achievement. One can transform darkness into light. Dear Miami-Dade Commissioners, by being elected comes great strength from above. We pray You utilize it fully. We pray You take the challenges, not in a timid way, but in a way, translating this from Yiddish, transcending the limitations and difficulties by rising above the challenges in your way and turning it into opportunities. And I'll conclude with the priestly blessing written in Deuteronomy. May the Lord bless you and guard you. May the Lord shine His contentions on you and be gracious unto you. May the Lord turn His contentions to you and bring you peace. And let us say amen.
In the name of God, the Most gracious, the Most merciful, all praise is due to God, known by many names, the Lord of the words and the Creator of all, nourisher and provider of all things. Assalamu alaikum. May peace, mercy, and blessing of God be upon you and all those who have the courage to serve, to protect our freedom, and to keep our nation prosperous. We offer our thanks and gratitude for each member of the Board of the County Commissioners and the opportunity that we have all to come together to do good. Dear God, may You bless our effort and help us sit present with one another mindful of our purpose. Today, we come with hearts deeply thankful to God for all the gifts we have. We thank God for our sincere and honest Commissioners, and we invoke God's blessing upon them. Our Lord, we pray that You will give them direction, purpose, and resolution. Inspire them with courage, wisdom, and compassion that they may stand for peace, love, and justice. Guide them to know and to do what is right, to challenge and resist anything wrong. Oh Almighty God, whose great power and eternal wisdom embraces the universe, our Lord, for the incoming Commissioners, we ask You to watch over them, to give them the strength, courage, and patience to endure their responsibility. We recommend them to Your loving care because their duty is crucial. Fill them with Your grace and strengthen them with Your love and peace. Amen.
Thank you so much, chaplains, for those uplifting and inspiring words. At this time, Honor Guard, please retire the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Joining us today as well is our Lieutenant Governor, Jeanette Nunez, who will be introduced later in the program, but a round of applause for our Lieutenant Governor. Mr. Pedro Garcia, our property appraiser as well. Former State Senator and County Commissioner Miguel Diaz-Laportilla. Highly a Mayor and former Commissioner, Steve Bobo. Miami Beach Commissioner, Alex Fernandez. Sweetwater Commissioner, Ian Viasensio. And Miami Commissioner, Alex Diaz-Laportilla. It's now my honor to call upon Oliver G. Gilbert III to provide greetings and deliver our welcome, and also introduce the Mayor. Mr. Chairman?
Good morning. Wait, is it still morning? All those introductions, the next time we do this, we're going to group all officials together. We're going to say, you all, y'all special, y'all, you know your names, stand up. We're going to clap once. We're going to have our three prayers because we need prayer. Oscar Brainin, I know you were forgotten, former Senator. We forgot, there was a former-elect dog catcher somewhere over there. We forgot that person, too. I was going to introduce the Lieutenant Governor personally because I'm so happy that she's here. You all, give her another round of applause, please. And please, give a round of applause to the wonderful kids who did the children of the Commissioners. I think that that was Sloan, right? She was, that was, she did the little, she was the cutest little thing. You know, I'm Oliver Gilbert, I'm the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, and I appreciate you all being here. First, let me just say, welcome to the event. Madam Mayor, it's always good to be with you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and all of my colleagues on the Commission. I would just offer these words to my colleagues, especially the newly-appointed ones. You are going to take an oath, and there was a conversation about which oath you take. The oath you take, the words you say, really don't matter because you now represent people, not just your family, not just your friends, not even just the people in your district. You are now one of thirteen. You are now one of thirteen. You stand, you raise your voice, you lift your hand in furtherance of the needs of the residents of this community. Nearly 3 million people, they are counting on you. They're counting on you to address serious issues in serious ways. The oath that you take, without regard to the words, the solemn meaning and the solemn nature with which you have to find fulfillment in that oath, every day, every day, whether it's counseling someone who's going through crisis, because sometimes we mourn together, or celebrating a joyous occasion, whether it's breaking ground or breaking bad news. It is now your job, and you don't just speak for yourself. I appreciate all of you. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you all, your family members, to the family members especially, the friends, you all. This is going to be tough for them. They are counting on you to be their foundation. I will say thank you in advance for them. You all, you give your family members a round of applause. I can tell you right now that Commissioner Cabrera is going to be a handful representative. I can tell you. Mr. Rodriguez, Anthony's going to be, you know, a little over the top sometimes. But through it all, we will come through it all together. I appreciate you all being here, and it gives me great pleasure to bring forth my friend, our La Cadaça, the Mayor of Miami-Dade County, Daniela Levine-Cava.
Wasn't so long ago that I was on this stage myself. Remember very well, twice sworn in as Commissioner, and my heart is with all of you, so excited for this new day. So, good morning, everyone, welcome. We're going to celebrate this next chapter, and we're also going to give honor to those who are no longer serving with us, who are with us here today in the audience, who bestowed us with their wisdom and experience. Thank you so very much. I know our former Chairman is here. They're all former Chairmen. Commissioners Diaz, Sosa, and Hayman, I hope I'm not leaving anyone out. But we're very, very grateful. I know I'm grateful because you helped show me the way. And to all of you who are now serving on the dais, it is really my great honor and privilege to work with you in this new opportunity to serve the people of Miami-Dade County, the newly-elected and those who have already been serving. And let's just say, we're all here for the same reason. We're here to serve the residents of Miami-Dade County. We're here to make sure that there's quality of life, that we can deal with all of the challenges of the day, and that we can do it by building commitment, shared commitment, to working across all of our communities to make sure that everyone, everyone has our support. So you were elected for good reason. You were elected because of your skill. You were elected because of your commitment, your experience, and each of you brings a unique perspective to this dais. But as the Chairman has said, we want this to be a salad where all the ingredients come together to make something. You didn't say that, Chairman, the salad part, but you implied it, that each of us brings something unique to this role, but the point is, is to work in harmony for the greater good of our community. And I think that even when we disagree, we can disagree respectfully and move forward for the well-being of all. So this is a joyful day. This is a day you're surrounded by your friends, your family, your closest colleagues. I want to say particularly to our Chair and our Vice Chair, you've already demonstrated grace, eloquence, and advocacy for the community. Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman, we know your proven leadership in Tallahassee will stand us in good stead, and you've demonstrated already your commitment to all of our residents, but also to our business opportunities and young people opportunities. I'm going to say a word about each of you because you're all special to me. I want to acknowledge Commissioner Marlan Bastien, who I've known for 40-plus years. I've worked alongside her. Clearly, you are a trusted community leader. You give voice, not just to the Haitian community, but all communities. And I know that the work you do in your district will continue to improve quality of life there and throughout the county. Thank you so much. And to Commissioner Danielle Cohen-Higgins, this is a new beginning for you. We're so pleased with your leadership in District Eight. Things are great in Eight, let's just be clear about that. As the former County Commissioner, I can brag about that, but your thoughtful engagement on critical issues, including the balance between smart development and sustainable practices, protecting our natural resources, I know you'll continue to be a champion. To Commissioner Mickey Steinberg, you are a fellow champion as well for our environment and our water. You understand the need to focus on our sustainable future. I look forward to working with you on these critical issues. Commissioner Kevin Cabrera, you've already been out and about. You were the first to attend our press events. Thank you so much, demonstrating your commitment to those most vulnerable, our seniors, and investing in our small businesses as well and many other areas of concern. To Mayor, now Commissioner, Juan Carlos Bermudez, I've had the pleasure also to work with you for many years, and I know that you'll continue to strengthen our relationship, not just with Doral, but all cities as you bring that important perspective, and our frontline workers, police, firefighters, teachers, healthcare workers. You've been focusing on all of that. And then, last but not least, our newest Commissioner, Rob Gonzalez, who's right next to my husband in the speed dial, so I have to be careful about that. I already made one little mistake. But it's been really a pleasure to get to know you and your strong commitment to our first responders, to community engagement, to public participation, having more of a voice in government. I'm really excited to partner with you. So, again, this is a celebratory day. We look forward to a beautiful, bright future. Thank you to everyone who's here to join us for the celebration. And I will always have an open door. You put me all on speed dial, please. Very eager to partner with you to achieve your hopes and dreams and together to ensure that this is the greatest place in the world to live, work, and play. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Levine-Cava and Chairman Gilbert, for those inspiring words. Let's give them another round of applause. And at this time, ladies and gentlemen, the Oath of Office will be administered to our newly-elected and appointed Commissioners. We'll go in the order of appointment and then elected Commissioners. Following the oath, each Commissioner and guest will have their pictures taken, and then the newly-installed Commissioners will have the opportunity to say a few words. First, representing District Eleven, the Honorable Roberto J. Gonzalez. First, representing District Eleven, the Honorable Roberto J. Gonzalez, the Honorable Jeanette Nunez, Lieutenant Governor of the great state of Florida, will administer the oath.
Good morning, I want to extend my congratulations to all the newly elected and re-elected Commissioners, and it's an honor to be here to provide the oath of office to our newly appointed Commissioner. Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Roberto J. Gonzalez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Miami-Dade County Commissioner.
The duties of Miami-Dade County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you so much, Lieutenant Governor Nunez. Can we get a round of applause for the greatest Lieutenant Governor? First and fourth most, all glory to God, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, through whom all things are possible, and I am proof of that today. Mayor Levine-Cava, Chairman Gilbert, Vice Chair Rodriguez, elected officials and dignitaries present, my fellow Board of County Commissioners, friends, family members, and all of you that are present today, I am honored to have Lieutenant Governor Nunez swear me in. She has been a mentor and a friend during this whirlwind experience. I am grateful to Governor Ron DeSantis for seeing in me someone that can step up to the challenge of faithfully representing the residents of District Eleven on the Miami-Dade Board of County Commissioners. Skye Sophia, Ava Marie, I want you to please remember those names, because they represent the reason why I accepted to be here today. They are my why, and they are the fuel that drives me forward. They're my daughters. It is because of them, my wife, my family, that I believe in action, in getting involved, and in service, and in achieving results. I started this journey by founding an organization to do something very simple, to help my peers and fellow county members get involved in the political process, show them how to go beyond complaining on our digital media platforms, so that instead we can roll up our sleeves, have a positive impact, and effect real change. Now, I stand before you honored for the opportunity to serve the whole of Miami-Dade County, eager to profoundly listen to the needs of our residents of District Eleven, and I am ready to give them a voice as I faithfully represent them in the County Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand here as the most unlikely person. My parents, they legally immigrated to this country with a hundred dollars in their pocket, a two-year-old baby in their arm, and hard work in their heart. Their efforts afforded me the opportunity to be the first in my family to graduate from To attain a Juris Doctorate degree, and to be the founding partner of a successful law firm. But even through my humble beginnings, the words my mother planted in my soul have been bearing fruit. She used to tell me that there was no limit to what I can achieve. She used to tell me that there was absolutely nothing that I couldn't do if I put my mind and heart to it. Let me tell you something, I believe her. Now, having been blessed with living in the great United States of America, daily realizing the American dream, with a gorgeous, God-fearing wife and life partner, Jessica Gonzalez, who's sitting right there in that beautiful blue dress. I have a purpose beyond myself. I have a purpose to do everything in my powers to strengthen the future of our gorgeous daughter's generation, to strengthen the future of our daughter's children's generation. And beyond that, a grand vision requires unity, collaboration, and a great team. The wise King Solomon wrote that "In the multitude of advisors plans are established", and my first step towards fulfilling this vision is to surround myself with professionals and community leaders who excel for their experience, brilliance, and accomplishments. Together, we will honor that trust that is being bestowed upon me today. To Mayor Levine-Cava, the Honorable Chairman Gilbert, Vice Chair Rodriguez, and my fellow Board of County Commissioners, I am looking forward to working with each and every one of you. I am looking forward to finding common ground, to make the difficult decisions that will make Miami-Dade County the safest, most prosperous, and beautiful place to live in South Florida, in the state, and possibly even the entire nation. In humility and gratitude, I embark on this new journey, ready to work hard in favor of our residents, and privileged to serve. All glory to God. Ladies and gentlemen, I am proof that miracles happen. I am proof that hard work pays off, and I am proof that the American dream is alive and well. God bless each and every one of us, God bless Miami-Dade County, and God bless the United States of America.
Great job, Commissioner Gonzalez, setting the standard for this morning. We're gonna go ahead and take pictures one more time with Commissioner Gonzalez, so again, the oath of office will be administered, then the pictures, as I said earlier, and then the remarks, but we're gonna go ahead and grab some photos, we didn't grab all the photos earlier. His family and the Lieutenant Governor are coming back onstage. Ladies and gentlemen, now we'll recognize our elected Commissioners by order of their district. Representing District Two, the Honorable Marlene Bastien. The Honorable Marquenzee La Pointe, U.S. Attorney for the Southern District for Florida, will administer the oath. Recently in the news, congratulations. Please come forward, along with your guests, so that we could administer the oath, take
Well, Marlene, before I begin, let me just say how tremendously proud that I am, what an honor it is to be part of your celebration. As a Haitian-American myself, who have watched you advocate and fight tirelessly, not just for Haitian immigrants, for immigrant rights across the board, watching you walk miles upon miles in the streets of Miami and across. My mother, my uncles, and all these people, they know you, they know you by name, they've watched you all these years. It is a special honor for me in particular to be part of this. And in closing, I want to say that, when I think of you, and I imagine a lot of folks in this town, when they think of you, you know, God has placed you here. I believe if you were living back in the nineteenth century, early on, I think you would have been part of the fight with the Underground Railroad, you would have been next to Harriet Tubman. I believe if you were living in the early nineteen hundreds, you would have been fighting along Susan B. Anthony for the rights of women. If you were living in the sixties, you would have been fighting next to Martin Luther King. We just happen to have been lucky to have you in our time, to have fights that you have fought, and I am so grateful that you have lifted us up, as now it is our pleasure to raise and lift you up. Please raise your hand. I, please state your name.
I, Marlene Bastien.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support.
To support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the government.
And government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Florida.
And the State of Florida.
And that I am duly qualified.
And that I'm duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the state constitution.
Under the state constitution.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Perform my duties.
Perform my duties.
As Miami-Dade Commissioner.
As Miami-Dade Commissioner.
So proud of you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Madam Mayor, Daniela Levine-Cava, Mr. Chair, Oliver Gilbert III, Vice Chair, Anthony Rodriguez, members of the Board, elected officials, past and present, friends, families, and colleagues, thank you for being here today. Thank you, Anthony Marc La Pointe, for postponing your trip to DC to be here this morning to swear me in, and congratulations on making history as the first-ever U.S. Attorney representing the Southern District of Florida. We are proud of you, and we thank you. Today is a glorious day. It is a day of gratitude, a day of all possibilities, a day of promise. Indeed, it is not every day that the daughter of two farmers, entrepreneurs, and educators from a small village in Haiti gets to serve on the biggest boards of our great state You see, it all started with my parents, Père Bastien and Maman Gina. They are here in the assistance in my village of Haiti. They were the family, we were the family, that provided safe haven. Under brutal dictatorship, for those who are persecuted, they were the ones who fed the hungry, they were the ones who built a clinic and a school to teach adults and children how to read and write in my village. So of course, when I arrived here forty-one years ago, I followed in their footsteps, working for all of our rights. My parents, Maman Gina and Père Bastien, trailblazed the path for me. My love and gratitude for you are infinite. To my three sons, my loves, my heart. Forty-one years in the struggle has not been easy for you, you have been holding signs in rallies as soon as you are able to stand on your own two feet and walk on a straight Thank you for making it easy for me and for your dad, when I traveled around the world to advocate for equity, inclusion, and fairness. I have garnered many awards over the course of forty-one years, however, you are my most cherished prize, you are my love and my life. Now, to the residents of District Two, who have been waiting to witness these days. For two years, I went door-to-door speaking with you, speaking with the business owners, speaking with community stakeholders, and anyone who would listen about our vision. And anyone who would listen about our vision. I spoke about how I would join the Board of County Commission To tackle the affordable housing crisis alongside my colleagues. I told everyone how I would prioritize District Two And I'll work with the mayor and staff to make sure We prioritize District Two For Septic to Sewer, Advocate for improved public transportation plan That addresses the community's needs, Build on speed, on efficiency, That a transportation service that is humane and efficient. How we would work together to curb the gun violence in our communities. Today, with my swearing in, We have taken the first steps To bring these issues to County Hall And work with my fellow commissioners towards solutions that benefit us all. I would like to say to you, Residents of District Two and Miami Dade County, We are one district. We are not divided by boundaries, race, ethnicity, or language. We are united in our goals to make our communities stronger and safer. A place where we are all proud to work, live, and play. The challenges facing District Two did not happen overnight. It will take all of us throughout Miami Dade County To work together For safe neighborhoods, Lighted streets, Floodless roads, And a more humane transportation system. District Two has been neglected for too long, And it will take the attention of all of us for it to thrive and to reach its full potential. That is what you elected me for, that is why you elected me, And this is what I'm going to do with respect, integrity, and transparency. To my colleagues on the Board, I will work hard With you To change the face of all the districts in our county. I'm excited for the work ahead, And I feel blessed to serve at this time. The time when the county elected its first female mayor, First ever female mayor, someone like me, Has been working and advocating in this community for 40 years. She's an advocate, a problem solver, and innovator. Please give it up for our mayor, Daniela Levin-Cava. And last week, we elected Chairman Gilbert as our chair. A tested. A tested leader. And not only that, a cool dresser. We also elected Vice Chair Anthony Rodriguez. I may not know you as well. I may not know you as well as I know the other commissioners, But I will learn to know you. I will learn to know the other commissioners recently elected. And I know that together, we will transform Miami Dade County Where everyone, I repeat, everyone, has a fighting chance to make it. Now, to everyone present who joined me today, I say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." I promise you that I will lead with transparency, Integrity, And honesty. I will not let you down. In the words of John Asenfield, I'd say this in closing. "I cannot do all the good work that the world needs, But the world needs all the good that I can do." This county, District Two, and all 13 districts Need all the work and all the good that we can all do. Let's get to work. Let's get it done.
Thank you, Commissioner Bastien, congratulations. And now representing District Four, the Honorable Mickey Steinberg, the Honorable Peter R. Lopez, 11th Circuit Court Judge, will administer the oath. Please come forward along with your guests who will join you on stage.
Good morning, Mickey, I'm sorry, Commissioner Steinberg. Good morning to all. We've been through a couple of these, you and I, and it is my privilege and honor to be here today, again swearing you in as you now represent and take your place on the County Commission. Running unopposed for a county seat is very rare. I think everyone here will acknowledge that, but I think it speaks volumes about what we, the people, believe in your abilities and you. And we look forward to your service on behalf of District Four and all the residents of Miami Dade County. With that, I ask that you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mickey Steinberg.
I, Mickey Steinberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And, I'm sorry?
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida, of course.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Miami Dade County Commissioner.
Of Miami Dade County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
I'm glad it's not too tall. It is a great honor to be here this morning as I embark on a new chapter of service to our community. Thank you, Judge Lopez, for always being there to swear me in and not swear at me. I am grateful and so lucky to be joined by my family, my mother who flew in from Israel to be here, my in-laws who didn't have to travel quite as far to be here today, the rest of my family, my wonderful husband, and children, friends, and so many people who aspire me to do the work I do every day. In the Jewish religion, we learn at a young age, the power in one particular phrase, "Tikun Olam," to repair or heal the world. I choose to lean into this belief because at my core, I know we can do so much through honest, hard-working service. By way to heal or repair the world is through the work we do as a community for each other and for our future generations. At a time when we see so many political divisions, communities torn apart, and differences separating neighbor from neighbor, I choose to find common ground, common purpose, and work towards the common good for our better of our community. This is a pledge I make to my residents. After campaigning for over 16 months, I had the opportunity to hear directly from residents and concerns and issues that they care so deeply about. I know we have important work to do ahead to tackle the challenges, both big and small, From better connecting our county through public transit corridors, to alleviating traffic congestion that strains our quality of life, to taking on affordability crisis that is making it harder for families to achieve homeownership and financial stability. We need to bring bold ideas and advanced solutions to these pressing matters. We need to make sure we protect our regional assets, and of course, our everyday work to improve our everyday quality of life. As a commissioner representing many communities along our coastline, I'm fully aware that we must ensure our county strengthens resiliency efforts, as we know hurricanes are becoming stronger. Rising waters continue to pose real threats. We need to aggressively invest in our resiliency efforts, our stormwater infrastructure and flood mitigation, Septic to Sewer strategies. We need to protect Fiskane Bay and ensure our water remains clean and safe. To our mayor, I look forward to working closely with you and your team, as I know we are equally committed to making Miami Dade the best it can be for all our residents. To our newly-elected chairman, Oliver Gilbert, Vice Chairman Rodriguez, I look forward to your collaborative leadership that brings our colleagues together so we can deliver strong policies for the residents of Miami Dade County. Congratulations to all my colleagues who are being installed today. I look forward to working with each of you and working with all my colleagues to better our community. I'm also excited and very much looking forward to working with the many wonderful and vibrant cities and unincorporated areas in District Four, and thankful for the support from those communities, from those community leaders and elected officials, because when local leaders work hand in hand, there is little we cannot achieve to improve the lives of our residents. I would be remiss if I didn't give a little shout-out to the residents of my hometown who actually gave me my start in public service as a commissioner there. They taught me the importance of community engagement, a lesson I will certainly apply in my new post. To my friend, Commissioner Sally Hayman, you have successfully represented District Four for the past two decades and have been a real champion for Miami Dade County. I am thankful for your friendship, support, and helpful transition over the last few months. In closing, Gracias por el increíble apoyo. I am truly grateful and humbled by the trust placed in me by the residents of District Four. I will always have an open-door policy and am ready to lead with heart, purpose, and mission, and always guided by Tikun Olam, because together we can heal and repair the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberg, congratulations. And next, representing District Six, the Honorable Kevin Marino Cabrera. The Honorable John Coriel, Florida Supreme Court Justice, will administer the oath. Please come forward now along with your guests.
Well, Commissioner, The people of Miami Dade County And arguably the state of Florida Are very lucky That you ran your campaign better than you ran mine.
This is an oath, not a roast.
I know that you will serve with tremendous energy And that the people were right to put their trust in you Because you will make us all proud And bring vigor and commitment To the job that I'm honored to see you start today. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
Kevin Marino Cabrera, that I will support, defend, and protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Miami Dade County Commissioner.
Of Miami Dade County Commissioner.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good morning. So Chairman Gilbert said I had 10 minutes, so let's get comfortable. He says, you know, "Take my time," that we're good, just kidding. As the son of Cuban exiles and as a first-generation American, I'm humbled to stand here today As your new county commissioner for District Six. I'm forever grateful to all of the residents who honor me with their vote of confidence in this election. I will be a voice for you, and I will fight for you and your family every day to protect and improve your quality of life. I'd like to start off by thanking our amazing campaign team, the countless volunteers, friends, and family who dedicated their time and efforts to helping us out. And most importantly, I'd also like to thank my wife. When I look at my colleagues, I see a group of servant leaders. A group of servant leaders ready to work together for the betterment of our county. And I commit to you all today that we will work to make our county government more accountable, more accountable, transparent, and responsive to the needs of the people we represent. I pledge to work to improve our residents' lives, particularly those struggling with this economic climate. I am ready to work for you, and I am ready to put Miami Dade County first. Thank you.
Quickest 10 minutes I've ever seen, straight and to the point. Congratulations, Commissioner Cabrera. All right. And now representing District Eight, the Honorable Danielle Cohen-Higgins, the Honorable Lodi Jean, 11th Judicial Circuit Court Judge, will administer the oath. Please come forward.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for pronouncing my last name correctly. It's Lodi Jean, but in Haitian Creole, it is Lodi Jean. This is a great day. This is a great day for Caribbean women. As you all have the Commissioner's bio, you know that she's homegrown, hardworking, and immensely qualified, but she also becomes the first Jamaican-American woman to serve on the County Commission, so. Here's to another, here's to another glass ceiling being shattered, and thank you for the honor of allowing me to swear you in. If you could please raise your right hand. I, Danielle Cohen-Higgins.
I, Danielle Cohen-Higgins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Miami Dade County Commissioner.
The duties of Miami Dade County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. The good news is, is that Commissioner Cabrera yielded his time to me, so I get 15 minutes. It really is an honor to be here. I am so proud to serve with this incredible board to our Madam Mayor. I am so proud to serve with this incredible board, to our Madam Mayor, to our new Chairman, to our Vice Chairman. It's truly an honor to serve with all of you this morning. You know, I stand before you today having received the call to serve. And when God made that call, he made it collect. And I needed to decide whether or not I would accept the charge. The charge to serve with integrity and honesty, the charge to serve with transparency, and the charge to sacrifice time away from my friends and from my family. The charge of leading with passion and the charge of leading with bravery. You know, I live in South Dade. I represent the amazing District Eight. And we have a Sky Zone in our district. We go almost every Sunday. And as you enter the Sky Zone, there's a toddler jungle gym. And every time Sloane, our three-year-old, enters and she goes and she plays on this toddler gym, at the entrance, there is rings that the toddlers are supposed to run and jump and grab, and there's a ball pit underneath. Except time and time again, Sloane didn't jump. Instead, she would sit on the edge, scoot her little butt, climb through the balls, and continue throughout the gym. And I would say to her, "Try, Sloane, try." "No, Mommy, I'm not gonna do it." Until recently, we went to Sky Zone, she ran immediately to the toddler gym. And this day, it was different. This day, Sloane yelled to me and said, "Mommy, today I be brave." And she leapt forward and she grabbed those rings. And for one split second, her little hands touched those rings. And immediately, they slipped and she fell, completely submerged in this plastic ball of this ball pit. And I ran over, very concerned, thinking that she was gonna be crying or hurt, and I terrified as a mother ran over. Instead, she popped out of the ball pit with a smile from ear to ear, so proud of herself for having taken that leap. Moments like this happen every single day where we are presented with the choice of taking a leap forward and being brave. If there's one thing you take away from what I have to say today, it is that we, as a community here in Miami Dade County, to effectuate the much-needed change, must be willing to be brave. Imagine with me, if you will, a Miami Dade County that's truly connected, where our public transportation is the primary source of transportation for all of our residents, where we institute creative ideas like P3s, aggressive PR campaigns, transformative trails, naming rights, to bring forth exactly that. Where we do everything we can for our residents in South Dade to bring the much-needed rail. Imagine a county where state attorneys and public defenders, teachers, firefighters, and police officers do not have to leave in order to afford a home elsewhere. We're putting forth measures, yep. Modular homes. We've been looking into it for over a year. These are homes built at a fraction of the cost and in a fraction of the time. And Miami Dade County is ripe to house the first-ever modular housing homeownership community. Imagine a Miami Dade County that through programming and policy creates true unprecedented economic opportunity, that successfully balances the importance of labor and the needs of businesses like the Airport Concessionaires Agreement that we negotiated. Imagine a Miami Dade County that leads the way on changing the narrative as it pertains to policing, not just locally, but also nationally. Where our residents feel safe because they are safe, because they know their officers are part of the community. Where our officers feel respected and appreciated, like what we did for them with the Hometown Heroes Parade. Where we promote growth in the department, restore confidence in the profession, and prevent ever having a shortage of officers like many large cities in our country are currently experiencing. Imagine a Miami Dade County that understands that when the last acre is paved and the last ounce is polluted, we cannot eat, drink, nor breathe money. A county that valiantly protects the Everglades and Biscayne Bay. A county that understands there is no Planet B. A county that focuses on infill development and actual need before moving the UDB. Finally, imagine a Miami Dade County where we realize that our power and our strength is with rather than against each other. Where we realize that national elections are often decided by us. Where we realize that if things do not change, the greatest threat to tearing us down is not foreign terrorists or a global pandemic, but rather each other. We are not threats to be neutralized, but rather voices to be respected and engaged. It shouldn't take an emergency like a hurricane or a tragedy like Surfside for us to come together and truly respect one another. I look forward to working with all of my colleagues and our Madam Mayor because we can accomplish all of this and so much more, but we must be willing to be brave. I ran on this vision. I ran on my record and results rather than just rhetoric. I ran on being an implementer, not an ideologue. I ran on decisiveness, not divisiveness. I ran on pragmatism rather than partisanship because I believe in people far more than I believe in party. I believe that what connects us is far stronger than what separates us, and I do not believe in demonizing differences of opinion. Because the things we say and how we treat each other is all being recorded. And I do not mean in 120 characters or less, or on our cellphones, or on social media, but more importantly and more consequentially, in the minds and memories of our children. So I stand before you today extremely humbled, where I vow to lead by example. I accept the charge and I thank all of you for being here. I thank my incredible husband, Mark, my children, Ari and Sloane, my beautiful mother, Audrey, my stepfather, Rossi, and my friends for your endless support. I thank the amazing and incredible residents of District Eight for placing me here and for your vote of confidence. Like I've said before and is worth saying again, we are not Tallahassee. We are not Washington DC. We are not Rs and we are not Ds. We are Miami Dade County. We are immigrants. We are exiles. We are refugees. We are fighters. We are Americans. We are hard workers. And despite its many flaws and imperfections, we love this country. Because if my three-year-old daughter can muster the strength and bravery to take that leap forward, damn it, together, so can we. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen Higgins. I feel bad for the next speakers. Great job. Congratulations. And now, representing District Ten, the Honorable Anthony Rodriguez. On behalf of the Clerk of Courts Harvey Rubin, Louis Montaldo, the Chief General Counsel of the Miami Dade Clerk of Courts for the 11th Judicial Circuit, will administer the oath. Commissioner Rodriguez and guests, please come forward.
Chairman Rodriguez, let me just say, it is an honor to be here today. And I find it a point of personal privilege to introduce you on behalf of Harvey Rubin, the Miami Dade Clerk's Office, and all of its many employees. We wish you Godspeed as you continue forward in your mission of courageous service to the servants of Miami Dade Public
Thank you.
and the county of Miami Dade County. Please raise your right hand. I, Anthony Rodriguez
I, Anthony Rodriguez
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government of the United States
the Constitution and government of the United States
and the state of Florida
and the state of Florida
that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state
that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state
and that I will, well and faithfully
and that I will faithfully
will, well and faithfully
will, well and faithfully
perform the duties
perform the duties
of Miami Dade County Commissioner
of Miami Dade County Commissioner
on which I am about to enter
of which I am about to enter
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations.
All right. Good morning. Still morning? Technically? All right. So I did put some words together today. And I was gonna keep it like to like one minute, but I'm inspired. I'm just kidding. Guys, first and foremost, a wise man once told me, "Do not thank people by name because you're bound to forget somebody." So thank all of you who are here today in support of myself and all of the new Commissioners getting sworn in today. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Chairman, and all my colleagues. Commissioner Cohen Higgins, I mean, you're a tough act to follow. I'd say that. And I won't beat Commissioner Cabrera. He was, he was too short. But I do wanna take a second to thank, of course, my family, my mother, my beautiful wife, my kids, my entire team, Ronnie, my best friend, and my Chief of Staff. And I wanna thank, for one second, those that often get forgotten and have not been brought up today. And those are the brave men and women that serve this country and keep us free every single day. So thank you. I am truly honored to be sworn in today as your County Commissioner for District Ten. For as long as I can remember, I have had a passion and a calling for giving back to this community. From a young age, I watched as other community leaders selflessly gave up their time and gave back to place that we call home. I wanted to not only follow in their footsteps, but blaze a trail of my own, unique to our changing state and region. As I got a little older, graduated from Sunset High, married my high school sweetheart, my beautiful wife, Lysette, and we started raising our three children, Adrian, Tony, and Angelice. I knew that I too had more to give and began to weave public service into my daily life. From street cleanups to hurricane preparation, from distributing hundreds of thousands of meals to neighbors in need during the pandemic as a member of the Florida House, to sponsoring legislation that focused on tax relief, school choice, protecting our Everglades and our water resources, and from standing up for our law enforcement officers and first responders to always seeking ways to empower those with disabilities. Now, alongside my colleagues on the Miami Dade County Board of County Commissioners, I hope to build on these successes and bring my sole focus to one of the best communities in the country. In the coming days and months and all throughout my term, I will focus on the quality of life for our residents. And in order to do this, we must cut through the red tape and our neighbors go through, that our neighbors go through when trying to do things properly. We must allow responsible progress to happen and not make our neighbors jump through unnecessary hoops. And while our county is a pioneer in many aspects, we lack in many others. Transparency must always exist and must be top-of-mind every day at all levels of government. Thank you. As we often hear, the backbone of our communities, and frankly, our country, are small businesses. My wife and I own and operate a small business in Kendall. And we know firsthand about the obstacles that come with building your own business. When passing ordinances, we must always keep that in mind and not hinder their ability to operate effectively and efficiently. As a united commission, we must incentivize small businesses to continue operating and incentivize new businesses to open, not create burdensome policies that make it nearly impossible for them to succeed. We saw this during the pandemic. People want to work. They want to provide for their families. And it is the government's job to provide those tools and opportunities and then get out of their way. Creating and incentivizing affordable and workforce housing is also at the top of my list. It is no secret that our homes have become unaffordable. We must be realistic in that we have a huge supply shortage. Let's keep up with our demand and let's find ways to make housing attainable so our workforce can continue to grow and thrive. So today, as we begin a new day in Miami Dade County and focus on a better future together, I promise my constituents that I will listen to their ideas and concerns. I will lead and serve with integrity, honesty, and decisiveness. And I will always be guided by God's will. And I extend my hand in partnership to my fellow commission members and elected leaders at all levels of government, from our local communities to our great nation, so that we can work together for those that we have entrusted to serve. Thank you and may God bless you all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Rodriguez. I should have taken your cue on the names. And last but certainly not least, representing District Twelve, the Honorable Juan Carlos Bermudez. The Honorable Barbara Arizes. 11th Judicial Court Circuit Judge will administer the oath. Please come forward with your guests.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. So just briefly, because everyone has said something. We've known each other for over two decades, way before you ever embarked into public service. You've always served faithfully, with honor, integrity. You've always been a true gentleman, always doing what you believe is the right thing for the constituents and everyone concerned. I've always been very proud of you. And we are very blessed to have you as a Commissioner for Miami Dade County. I'm sure you'll continue to do fantastic job that you've done. So, thank you. And now, raise your right hand and the left hand on the Bible, if it's one closest to your heart. So repeat after me. I, Juan Carlos Bermudez
I, Juan Carlos Bermudez
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government of the United States
the Constitution and the government of the United States
and of the state of Florida
and of the state of Florida
that I am duly qualified to hold office
that I am duly qualified to hold office
under the Constitution of the state
under the Constitution of the state
and that I will well and faithfully perform
and that I will well and faithfully perform
the duties of Miami Dade County Commissioner
the duties of Miami Dade County Commissioner
on which I am about to enter
on which I am about to enter
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations and Godspeed.
With four women in the house, it's a smart man that gets flowers for... Thank you to Oga and staff. Thank you very much. And I wanna say that Commissioner McGee reminded me that I have the remainder of the time period thanks to Commissioner thanks to Commissioner Cabrera and the others, so I will take them all. Not true, not true. I know I'm all, I'm between your lunches, your afterparties, etc., so I'll try to be on point as much as I can. First and foremost, I wanna thank God, because without God, I would not be here. I was given the honor of being the first mayor of Doral, and the honor to be here with you today, now as the Commissioner of District 12. I wanna thank Judge Barbara Arizes for those wonderful words. We have been friends a long time, and she is a great jurist, her son also is a great jurist, by the way, so, and I don't want her husband to get sensitive, he's also a great lawyer. So, thank you for your friendship and always being there for us. There are a couple of people here today that have not been recognized that I do wanna recognize, and I believe that she's here, the former Vice Mayor, now Councilwoman again, just got re-elected of the city of Doral, Deena Cabral. There she is. My fellow Councilmember, Oscar Puig Corvay, I don't know if he made it, but he said he was coming. In the back, I know there's two great supporters, former Hialeah Councilman and State Representative Eddie Gonzalez, who's been a longtime friend and supporter. And actually, a former neighbor many years ago before we moved to Doral, School Board Member Roberto Alonso, who I think is also here. Roberto, thank you. You know, there's a lot of people to thank, I'm gonna, the first two I'm gonna thank are not here. I get a little bit emotional every time I talk about them because they're gone, and that's my mother and father. Two great people. I would be the person I am today if it wasn't for Juan Alberto Sacaria Bermudez and Inada Bermudez Aguirre from Santa Clara, Cuba. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be here today. They taught me of the value of giving back to community, honesty, integrity, character, which are very important. My family that is here today also, my brothers and sisters, my brother Alberto, my sister Carmen, my sister Irma, who, I'm the baby of the family, so I got my sisters to always be on my side by doing that, and I'm, you know, because my brother could be my, actually my father, because he's the oldest by about almost 16 years, but he's the reason we're here in the United States in part. So, his wife, Gotti, I believe, is here, my nieces that are here, Jenny and Jessica, I think Christine and Vivian are also here somewhere, right? Am I missing them? And Karina. Certainly, my extended family through Joaquin, who is married to Christine, and Domingo, who is married to Vivian, and, there he is, I see him, I can't miss him, he's too big. And obviously, Rick, who is married to Jenny, and I wanted, the last two I mentioned, I wanna thank them, this past Monday was a very difficult day for my family in particular, as Rick, who is a Miami-Dade County Police Officer, who was probably somebody you heard about, thankfully, he is okay, everything, and he's here, so thank you, Rick, for your And Domingo, both of them are on the front line as Miami-Dade County Police Officers, and this past week, we learned, you know, how close things can be, and we're very blessed that he's here, that Rick is here with us today. You know, I grew up in District 12, so I wanna thank everybody in District 12 that made it possible. Actually, the district had my original home, and then Senator Garcia moved it out, 5959 West 14th Court, so now I have to walk for him in the next election to make sure I knock on the door that I grew up in, since it was right in there, but I grew up in the district, and I have the honor now to actually be the Commissioner for District 12, and certainly, I wanna thank all the supporters of the, and all the elected officials, some of them are here from Sweetwater, Hialeah, Hialeah Gardens, Medley, Doral, obviously, that supported me, and the unincorporated area. It's a vast district, but it's a great district, and I'm very honored to represent it. The people in Doral, obviously, I wanna thank them, they were there at the beginning, when a long time ago, they chose me, and God gave me the opportunity to be the first mayor of what I consider one of the greatest cities in the United States of America, which is the city of Doral. And like I always said, there'll be other mayors, but there'll never be another first mayor, so it'll be something that's very important to keep in mind. I do wanna thank the former county commissioners that are here, and thank them for their service over the years. You know, being an elected official is difficult, in particular on the families, and they served, and have served so honorably for so many years, and I thank them for their support, and even when we disagree, I still thank them for their service. Obviously, the people that made my life possible, and make my life every day, and the ones that really have put up with a lot of it, whether it's taking off as a young lawyer for the first 10 years of our marriage to fight the government of Fidel Castro all over the world, whether it's trying to organize and try to bring change to the area that is now known as the city of Doral, or whether it's many of the other causes that we've taken up. I could not do that without my wife, Vivian. She is the, really, the anchor for me, she is the rock, and she is a special needs teacher in Miami-Dade County Public School Systems, and it's amazing what she does, and when she has children, for many years, she taught at Laurel Park Elementary, and when she has children that graduate like they did this year from Florida A&amp;M with a master's and started out as special needs kids, and still remember her, that tells you that the job she does as a teacher is extraordinary. So Viv, I love you, thank you so much for... And the three girls, obviously, you know, they're all different, but they're all similar, and thank God, they all look like her mother, but it's a good thing. And that's our beautiful girls, Inada, our oldest, named after my mother, who came right after my mother passed away, very smart and incredibly smart and talented young lady. Elena, the middle one, who is probably the most like me, which is why she argues with me all the time, which is okay, and strong character, and she'll let you know what she thinks. And the baby, the surprise, Lisa, who is a great blessing from God, and she has a lot of pressure on her, because, you know, both of her sisters, like my brother, as my sisters did, they think they're her parents, so that's okay. And she, so she hears it from all sides, from me, from mom, and from the two others, she's a wonderful young lady. You know, the most important thing for me today is to let you know a little bit of the reason why I did this, and why I believe, and what we're all doing collectively. You know, I wanna thank Mayor Levine-Cava, she, like many other elected officials, some of you that are here today, endorsed me and supported me, and I am forever grateful for her support, along with Vice Chairman Gilbert, who actually introduced me at my kickoff event, if, and I thank him for that, and certainly Vice Chairman Rodriguez, who's become a friend during this process, and all my other colleagues that are here today. We have a great task, but I think it's a task that we are up to it. You know, sometimes I get into things that people tell me, don't say it, but it is important. You know, for the first time in two generations, we have a brand-new county commission. And all of us here can serve no more than 10 years, eight in most instances, and there's a limit on the time that we can, that we have to make some of those differences that Commissioner Cohen Higgins spoke about. So I think we're all, we understand that, and I think it's important for us to keep that in mind, because we're gonna have a limited amount of time to make a difference. We are the government closest to the people, my friends in Tallahassee don't like to hear that, my friends in DC like to hear it less, but you know, they get a benefit, they don't get bugged as much, I guess, because they're not as close to the people. I can tell you this, you know, a former state representative once, that Representative Doral was in the shopping center with me and the Publix, and I think Anthony's heard this story, he was very high up in the state, and somebody asked me about fixing a road, I said, "It's not our road, it's a state road, why don't you ask him?" She said, "Well, I don't know who he is." I said, "Well, you should, because he controls the purse strings." But we are the government closest to the people, so you will see, you know, that we impact also, people, more so in many instances, than other governments. You know, the partisan divide that exists in Tallahassee and in DC also is not a luxury that we can have as an elected body. You know, whether we are Republicans or Democrats, or anything in between, it's our duty to work for all of Miami-Dade County, not just our districts, to make sure that we can move forward and make sure that we can be effective and efficient. I ran many, many, many years ago, when I first ran, I ran at the time on something that is still the three reasons and the three pillars of why I believe someone should serve. Number one, we should serve to make a difference, but we should run in a transparent and honest way. We should say what we believe even with those that don't agree with us. We should try to be efficient and effective. Those in Doral know, and I know Madam Mayor knows, that two of the things I always mention are metrics, very important, because you cannot manage what you cannot measure, and do not work in silos, because in a government of almost 30,000 people, there is enough difficulty in trying to get things done, but if everybody believes that they can only work in silos, we are not going to be successful. And finally, the county continues to grow, whether we like it or not, whether you believe in urban infill, whether you believe in expanding some of the areas where things are able to be built, the bottom line is more and more people still love to come to this wonderful place we call Miami-Dade County. There's a reason why people move here, whether it's on the east or it's on the west, where District 12 is at, and we have to be sensitive to the system that we have, the Northwest Wellfields, very few people know this, they talk about the Biscayne Aquifer, but forget that the Northwest Wellfields, which really provide a lot of the water on the western part of the county, are in District 12, and we must protect them, but at the same time, we need to create a place where our children, our children's children can stay here and grow, and grow their families, and we need to tackle workforce housing, we need to tackle the environment, but the most important thing is, we need to make decisions. You know, for the first time in Miami-Dade County, there'll be, and Chairman Gilbert, myself, and Commissioner Keon Hardeman, three individuals who have headed the Miami-Dade County League of Cities. I know Richard Cooper's happy about that, because he's here somewhere, but the important part about that is that now half of our county lives in unincorporated areas and half lives in cities. And our goal should be to provide efficient and effective government, a government that can grow, but that can grow in a way that makes sense, not only to the environment, but to the people that it serves, and a government that gives opportunity to all. I know that it's a very different process being a mayor than being, you know, Commissioner. So to my colleagues, you know, I know that they understand this, this is a cooperative game, it's not a competitive one. Miami-Dade County doesn't benefit if it's a competition, but it benefits if it's a cooperative game, and we, I think, working collectively and not individually, can make that difference. But to make that difference, we have to make decisions. You know, we're still talking about the East-West Corridor, hopefully soon we'll make a decision on that, and I think that, you know, we were talking about that 20 years ago when I was the founding mayor of Doral. So I think what's important for my colleagues and for Madam Mayor is that we move forward and at least make those decisions. Without that, we will not be able to, and I know some of you are gonna disagree with our decisions, I know some of you will disagree with my decisions, but I need you to know that the 12 other people on that dais, and Madam Mayor, do it for the betterment of our community. We can agree to disagree agreeably. That is what makes politics work. I think that now, as I mentioned before, with a Board of County Commissioners that has a limited amount of time to make a difference, with the Board of County Commissioners, that in the, well, in two generations, the first new full Board of County Commissioners, we have a golden opportunity to make a difference, but we have to remember those two tenets. We're here to make decisions, and we're also here to agree to disagree agreeably. I'm gonna finish this with something very simple, those of you that know me know that besides my faith as a practicing Catholic, what's very important to me has been my study of Stoicism, which I'm only about 20% there, but I've tried, and it's helped me deal with politics, but the last of the great Roman emperors, Marcus Aurelius, who was a Stoic, had a very simple quote, "And I think if we do this and we follow this as the governing body of this county, all the residents will benefit. If it is not right, do not do it. If it is not true, do not say it." I look forward to working with all of you as we move forward on making Miami-Dade County the premier place to live, work, play, and learn. God bless you, God bless Miami-Dade County, God bless the United States of America.
Great job Commissioner Bermudez, lots of great takeaways, and finishing strong. Another round of applause for Commissioner Bermudez. We started this event with prayer, and it's only fitting that we end this event with prayer. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, please rise, and I invite the Bishop Gregory Toussaint to lead us in the benediction. Mr. Bishop?
Well, as we conclude this marvelous installation ceremony in prayer, I'd like to draw the attention of our distinguished leaders to something that will be important as they exercise their commissionership. It is called wisdom. "I am wisdom," says the scripture, "and by me kings reign." It will take wisdom to make decisions on behalf of 2,700,000 people. Wisdom, however, is not a static gift. It is a dynamic virtue. You flow in wisdom as long as you're connected to the fountain of wisdom. You walk in light as long as you follow the Father of Lights. King David said, "By your light we see the light." So hence my prayer, right now, is that God would grant each and every one of you a heart to seek His will, know His will, and do His will, so you can best serve His children. May it be so, in the name of Jesus Christ, Yeshua HaMashiach. Bye-bye.
Thank you Bishop Toussaint. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our program. Have a wonderful afternoon. Thanks for joining us, and happy holidays. Congratulations, Commissioners.